Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, September 21st, meeting of the Chicopee School Committee. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, for my nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
In compliance with open meeting laws, we are right now recording and will live broadcasting and will be future broadcasting this meeting on public television. At this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence, and we'll observe that for all those in the military and for all those who protect us. Thank you. Could we please have a roll call?
Mayor View?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Barcello?
Present.
Mr. DePaola? Mrs. Perret?
Present.
Mrs. Schofield?
Here.
Mr. Shumsky?
Here.
Mr. Lamoth?
Here.
Mr. Gerard?
Here.
Mr. Bernard? Mrs. Loops?
Present.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Ten present, two absent.
Thank you, Sarah. We'll move on to the agenda, and we have public announcements by committee members. I'll start with our vice chair, Susan Zatella.
I'm all set.
Thank you. Anyone to my left?
Stan? Chet?
All good.
All set? Who'll go to my right?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a comment. I spoke with a couple of teachers about a week ago regarding the opening of the schools, and I was pleasantly surprised to hear how smooth the opening was this year. So that's a credit to our administration for doing their homework, literally in the summertime, all our teachers, and certainly our maintenance division getting the schools ready. But this was great to hear that everything went so smoothly.
Thank you, Sandra.
Just a reminder to everyone who's out driving to be aware of the children that are walking to school or crossing the street, as well as the school buses and their stops, to drive slowly and be aware so that there are not any accidents. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make a statement to the committee and to the public on the advice of the city's law department. As of yesterday and today, I have moved out of my residence in Ward 1, under circumstances outside of my control. I'm still going to be living in the city of Chicopee, just not in the ward, unfortunately. And it's unlikely that I'll be moving back into the ward before nomination papers become available. So I'd like to state that I won't be running for reelection, but I'll still be doing the job. I'll still be taking calls, and I'll still be taking emails. And I'd like to thank my colleagues for, you know, the experience I've had so far. I'd like to thank my friends and family who supported me in getting here. And I still remain committed to doing the work on behalf of the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. David?
I'm all set, Mayor.
Thank you. If it's the will of the committee, I'd like to just share a couple of thoughts. Bowie Elementary School did a fantastic job helping us celebrate the 75th anniversary of the U.S. Air Force. We were there last week, and I'd like to thank Principal Norman Burgess, Vice Principal Kate Lyons, the teachers, the staff, and students for their warm welcome and participation in the ceremony. Colonel Janik, our base commander here at Westover Air Force Reserve Base, and his staff appreciated the celebration, the shirts that were provided. Interim School Superintendent Alvin Morton, school committee members Sam Shumsky and Grace Schofield, and City Councilor Mary Beth Piniac Costello joined us in the celebration. And I'd like to take a moment to thank my chief of staff, Mike Peace, and everyone else who was involved in making that anniversary something special. And to have Bowie School participate certainly will be a memory for those who were present, and also the representatives who joined us from Westover Air Force Reserve Base. I just want to let you know, we've been in contact with the Holyoke Mayor, Josh Garcia, to assist the people of Puerto Rico, along with Representative Carlos Gonzalez, Senator Adam Gomez, Representative Orlando Ramos, and City Councilor Delmarino Lopez. Packages are being assembled as we speak and sent to those in need. Our hearts go out to those suffering, and the school students in Puerto Rico, who are all struggling to put their lives and communities back together. Certainly, our thoughts and prayers are with the people of Puerto Rico, the Dominican Republic, and also Turks and Caicos, and anyone else who's been impacted by Hurricane Fiona. Lastly, I just wanted, actually, second to lastly, I just wanted to mention that it's no secret the sword game between Chicopee High and Chicopee Compliment will take place on Thanksgiving. Everyone knows who I root for that particular day. That's Thursday, November 24th. There'll be lots of other athletic games at both high schools, and you can find those schedules on the Chicopee Public Schools website. I encourage people to attend those games. Fans really mean something, especially for the home teams when there's participation and the community gets involved. So please support our local sports teams here at the high schools. And lastly, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Big E Day for the city of Chicopee is September 27th. I hope to see everyone, all our students, faculty, school committee members. I hope you're able to join us on our day of celebration of the Eastern States Expo. It's always been a memorable occasion, and I'm hopeful to see you there. Thank you. Next up, superintendent, public announcements.
I have none, Mayor.
What? Public input. I have one person signed up for public input. I have Robert Allen. Hi, Robert. Please come on up to either one of the two microphones and just please state your name and address for the record, and public input has a time limit of, for you, will be three minutes. We have one person speaking today, and speakers will be... And I just wanted to point out that character assassinations and derogatory attacks will not be tolerated. Mr. Allen, you have the floor.
The microphone works. I can hear it. I can hear it working out there. My name is Robert Allen. I live in Ward 8, adjacent to the Lambert-Lavoy School. And it's, I'm here because it's a messy area on my side of the school. There's a safety issue besides being messy. On this side of the school, on the right side of the school, there are 100-foot, there's a couple of 100-foot trees that have never been trimmed for safety reasons. I have some pictures, but you need, what, you picture a 100-foot tree, and a long branch coming from the trunk that's about 60 feet long, and the tip of it's maybe 15 or 20 feet from the ground. It's very obvious. Whoever maintains the school, walks outside the school, should know that this needs some attention. Now, every time there's a wind or activity there, branches sometimes three inches or smaller, or four inches, six, five, eight feet long, fall from underneath the overhang of these large, tall branches that should have been trimmed, and go right on top of the school property. Now, I've lived there, I lived there for 50 years, and I never, I would like to see someone be able to take an interest. If you're a janitor, take an interest, go do something besides sitting down in the school. Walk around and make some suggestions, or tell somebody about what you see. They mow the grass, they go under this area here. Now, this is one of the main safety issues that I see, because the branches keep falling down, and it's a 60-foot from the trunk, traveling down to about 15 feet from the ground.
Mr. Allen, if I may? I'm going to have the tree warden take a look at those trees. We have a forestry department here in the city of Chicopee, and I will have him take a look at those trees. But I'm a little confused, because I believe Lambert-Lavoy is located on Kendall Street, and you put down that you live there.
Lambert-Lavoy is on Kendall Street, Rolfe Avenue is on one side. I'm parallel to Rolfe Avenue, which is Summit Avenue.
Thank you. Okay.
And the school is only, is on the property side of my fence, or your fence, okay? So you can go down Kendall Street, and you look at the school, and you can't miss these tall trees, okay? They're 100 feet tall. Now, I talked to some of the groundkeeper there, and they say, well, this is, I'll mention it to somebody. The simple security places, there's two side doors that go to the school. They got security lights, and these trees never, if I was there, I could take a six-foot or a 10-foot cutter and trim the low branches on the tree, on these two new trees that were planted there maybe 15 years ago. They never touched it. It opens up, if these are cut, it opens up my view of the safety of the school, because there's security lights. And what these branches trim where they're supposed to be, because they can't drive under them when they mow the grass, okay? That's another thing they could take care of.
Thank you, sir.
No, I'm not finished. There is, along the fence going towards Kendall Street, they, there's branches and dervish there that's been there for over a year. They mow up to it, but they never remove any of the...
Debris?
Debris that's a foot high or so, and half, quarter the size of that table. It's against the fence on the right side of the school. Now, there's always been, there's always been, there's always, well, there's a maintenance man. I seen one maintenance man there about two, three years ago, and when something got broke from the, there's a children's area where they have small kiddie playground, and juveniles or people go there, and they like to disassemble a little blue roof that sits on top of the, on top of the peak of the kiddies area.
Playground, the playground?
Yeah. There's a piece, there's a piece that's probably 50, 50 feet by 50 feet, starting on the Kendall Street side, going to Summit Avenue, and there's a little, there's a fence around it, and it has, it's for little children, you know, that are, they bring their mother or father, bring them there. They're only about, a kid, the children are only about, I don't know, three feet high, four feet high, but they enjoy the area. And the janitor, he's always, anytime something looks like it's being disassembled, he'd go back up there, put a screw or a bolt in there, and make it look, make it look decent, nice, presentable. I'm here because the school is messy, and never been like that. I've been there for 50 years, and I'd appreciate if, I'm proud of the city of Chicopee, and I'd like to see more people proud, you know, in the school that work for the school and do something rather than just sit there and collect their money and do what they're supposed to do. I'm looking for people that want to do something for the city of Chicopee.
Thank you, sir.
See what you could do about that.
Thank you, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, and thank you for keeping the city going.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That concludes public input. With visitors, we have none. Approval of minutes, 22-9-11.
Move that the minutes of the regular meeting of the school committee held on September 7th, 2022 be approved.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Reports, 22-9-12.
Report on personnel action. To date, just to give some information, we've hired 85 teachers, 31 pairs, 25 sub-teachers, 16 sub-pairs, and seven Unit B members.
Thank you. Any discussion on the report on personnel action? Sandra? Excuse me, Sandra?
It was nice to see there were no retirements and no resignations. I don't think I've ever seen a blank list there.
I've never seen that either. But it's good without the resignations. I can't promise.
Prior to that, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We'll move on to new business, 22-9-13.
Move that the bills warrant S090022, totaling $299,821.75 be approved.
Don, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Chet, would you like to read the warrants into the record for us?
I surely will.
Thank you.
Under athletics, Mr. Mayraki has submitted two warrants, and what we will do is, what I will do is read the total of the two warrants, and then subsequently, we will vote individually on each warrant. Under athletics, $12,111. Food services, $137,357. General expenses, $118,992. Maintenance, $67,342. Special education, $105,498. Student activities, $750. Telecommunications, $511. Tuition refunds, $4,800. Reimbursements, $91. For a total of the two warrants, $591,768.
Thank you. Any discussion on the warrants, or the first warrant? So we'll be voting again twice, and the first warrant, S090922, for $299,821.75. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Nine yes, one out of ten.
Motion carries. 22-9-14.
Move that the bills warrant S091622, totaling $291,946.18 be approved.
Grace, can we get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? No discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Motion carries. New business, 22-9-15.
Update on grants and ESER spending. So the first update I'll give is on the FY23 grants as of September 20, 2022. FY23 federal allocation entitlement grants, Title I, $3,132,673. Title II, $322,120. Title III, $77,802. Title IV, $219,506. IDEA, $202,62. $95,493. Perkins, $149,409. Mass reimbursement, $62,720. ARPA, Cosmo, and Water Jet, $108,000, totaling $6,619,593. FY23 state grants submitted and awarded. Teacher diversification pilot grant, $4,000. High-quality summer learning, $100,000. TAG summer grant, $4,000. SEAL in-behavioral grant, $105,400. McKinney-Vento, $85,000. Total awarded was $294,400. FY22 private grants submitted and awarded, it was zero. Current submissions, mass grad promises were in motion, $23,000 were submitting for. Safe and supportive continuation, $20,000. The Glean grant, $71,000. School nutrition equipment is $114,985, for a total of $228,985 were submitting for. And we're preparing to submit for building capacity, high-quality ed tech, which is due on September 22nd, $50,000. Chicopee Cultural Council, due October 17th, $14,400. Teacher diversification, September 30th, $30,000 were submitting for. Turnaround assistance grant, this is due October 3rd, submitting for $25,000. Improvement ventilation and air quality, October 28th, $3 million. And then school water improvement grant, rolling application through 2022 for resources, for a total of $3,119,400. And then for, any questions on those grants?
Any questions on those grants? Sir, Sam?
Can you email me that? Or is it from the packet we got the other day?
Yeah, we can submit, we can email that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
I was going to ask you about that ventilation grant, but it sounds like you're already on top of it.
Yes. We saw that. It was in the commissioner's update. We'd already planned for it. We're going to submit for the grant either way. Regardless, we have the money to pay for it, but if that money comes through in that particular grant, then we can use the money we had already earmarked for something else.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
Just one, John.
Sure, Chet.
The Perkins grant, is that exclusively for vocational?
Correct. It's for the CTE program. Perkins programs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Alvin. We'll move on to 22-9-16.
Mayor, still one, the ESER funding?
Yes, I'm sorry. ESER funding, spending.
So that was just, that's the Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Fund Act. We had ESER 1, 2, and 3. ESER 1 was the CARES Act, Coronavirus Relief and Economic Security Act. That was a submission, we got allocated $2,449,340. We spent money on, 9.3% was on administrative salaries. Instructional staff was 17%. Support staff was 3.7%. Stipends was greater than 1%. PPE was 7%. And we bought storage, containers, air purifiers, plexiglass, face masks, sanitizers. Technology was 14.8%. Chromebooks, light-inights, charging carts, mobile signage, licensing laptops. Online assessments and content-specific platforms was 32.2%. Online licensing, assessment supports, curriculum supports, tutoring supports, internet protection, and then central office rental, Ed 134, Dulong, was 9.6%. And that, we zeroed ESER out. It ran from March 13, 2020, to September 30 of 2022. ESER 2 is the ARBRAC American Rescue Plan. That runs from July 1, 2022, to September 30 of 2024. No, that's actually ESER 3, sorry. I apologize. ESER 2 is the Coronavirus Relief and Supplemental Appropriations. That runs from July 1, 2021, to September 30 of 2023. That is $9,946,117. We have remaining funds, $3,779,592. Administrative salaries, 3%. Instructional staff, 13%. Support staff, 6.7%. Stipends, 1%. Contractual services, 9.1%. We reuse for building substitutes, PD providers, health service support, school repairs, school safety, school culture, and climate, and college partnerships. Supplies and materials is 14.5%. We reuse Chromebooks, for Chromebooks, light-inights, school supplies for classrooms, physical education supplies, laptops, school safety and security, theater arts and staging supplies, wireless devices, yonder, curriculum resources to support all content areas, athletic supports and resources, classroom and cafeteria seating, and library resources. And other costs was 7.4%. We have subscriptions, high-speed internet filtering, five-star transportation, Apple licensing, building locks, and cameras, storage trailer, rental costs, capital resource management, school safety and security, and PPE. And equipment, 7.5%. Chromebook repairs, school announcement system, and school radio system. We have 3.799,592 left of the 9.9 million dollars in ESER 2. ESER 3 is the American Rescue Plan. That runs from July 1, 2022, to September 30, 2024. Our allocated amount is $22,330, $22,330,824. And remaining funds, we have $18,498,824. And we spent it on, so far, stipends, but we plan to use it for social, emotional, mental health, well-being, improvement to facilities, improved safety, such as heating and cooling system, and water fountain upgrades, additional staff to support for academic learning laws, continued emphasis on technology and equipment, additional activities to support special education populations, such as students with disabilities, English language learners and others, additional instructional time to students, and continued emphasis on student and staff practices.
Thank you. Any questions on the ESER grants or ESER funds? Don?
Could we get, at the facility subcommittee, could we get Scott to tell us what the plans are for that money for upgrades?
For which piece?
ESER 3.
ESER 3? For the heating and cooling system?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Any other new business by committee members? I'll start to my left.
We still have...
Grace, Sam, Chet? New business?
We still have one item. We still have one more agenda item.
Oh, I apologize. 22-9-16.
Admissions to athletic events for students. Topic requested by school committee member Douglas Gerard.
Doug, you have the floor.
Thank you. I put this on the agenda. I received a couple of phone calls regarding our current policy for admission into athletic events for our students, and simply just wanted to go over this policy with Mr. Morton and have him tell the board kind of what the policy is now, and then hopefully, we can have a little discussion with my colleagues to feel if they want to change the policy, or if they think that the policy is acceptable. So, Mr. Morton, if you could just kind of briefly give us a rundown of...
The current, the current policy is gate receipts and admission, free admissions. It's file D7. It's a policy D7. Right now, adults are charged $5. Students, grade 6 through 12, $4. And for the sword and Thanksgiving game, it's $5. Chicopee Public School students in grades 6 through 8 are admitted with, free with a valid school ID. Students in grades K to 5 are admitted for free. And then anybody, all students pass is issued... And then anybody, all students pass is issued by the high school building principals for the Renaissance Club and in-season athletes or those approved by the coordinator of athletics also get in for free.
Sure. Don, you have a question?
Yeah, I'd like to refer this to the policy subcommittee if there's going to be any changes made.
So we have a motion to refer to the policy subcommittee. Friendly motion.
I like it.
Okay.
Can we also add to that to make sure that if, when we're talking about, have Sean, Mr. Macken come in to talk about the piece of how the logistics works for this particular piece?
Yes, that would make sense.
That makes sense to you, Don?
Fair, thank you.
Very clear. Any other discussion on the admission to athletic events for students? Thank you. So again, new business. I apologize for missing one of the agenda items. Everyone to my left is all set with new business. To my right? Anyone? All set? Entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion second to adjourn, all in favor? Aye.
Who made the motion?
Anyone?
Everybody did.
So moved. Thank you, everyone, for joining us.
29. 22.
Record?
2904.
No.
I don't think Alvin could have read it any faster.